How you doing? Goodbye. Refills in the air.
Thank you.
Fancy.
Moving up the road. That's probably a guess. Reading material? We're gonna have faces, we're gonna buy our faces to for the iPad holders. Tell you something, they don't get banged up. You ever used to watch, um, Mission Impossible? Yeah, I'm like. This will self-destruct and.
Are we ready? Okay, I'm gonna call the, welcome everybody to the Milton City Hall, I'm gonna call the meeting of Milton Common Council for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-two order, and the first item is the roll call.
Do we have anyone to record, record roll call?
Here, here. Very funny.
Mike, you're doing it?
I am now.
We're all present.
All present.
They're here and we're present.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, the presentation about the iPad, iPads, and Drew is going to do it.
Hey, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I've been told I have a radio voice, which means I'm really loud.
You still need to be in front of the microphone, thank you.
We good? Awesome. Alright, so, real quick, I just wanna give you kind of a quick overview and we'll try to go through a little bit of the reference guide that I put together for you guys. Uh, first thing, I just wanna, uh, go over the fact of, one, is everybody comfortable with iPads? Have you used iPads before? So, I see someone shaking their head, so. Uh, so if you do have questions and everything, if, if something comes up and everything, I'm more than happy to sit down with you and go over it, you know, make the transition a little bit more comfortable, so. First thing on, on it is just the fact of what's the primary purpose that we're gonna utilize the iPads for? Uh, one is gonna be for the OnBase Agenda Go, uh, pro, uh, application that we're gonna start utilizing in order to, uh, try to transition from using, uh, paper everywhere to a more digital electronic, uh, you know, format for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, and the other goal of it as well too is going to be, uh, to provide you guys with the opportunity to be able to manage your city uh, email accounts from the iPads as well too, so. One thing I just wanna comment on is I saw that a, a lot of individuals with their email setup had forwarding going on with their, uh, their city email account to their private email account, and obviously I can't dictate policy for you guys and everything, but I would strongly encourage you all just to keep the city email account within the city email system. And the reason why I, I'm kinda making that pitch to you guys and everything is just because of the fact of open records requests. So, we deal with that quite a lot. Susan?
And since some of us who've been on council a long time had our own email accounts, can you get all of staff to start using our city email account?
Absolutely.
I've asked a couple of times and I get them on both.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can definitely make an emphasis on that and everything, so, I mean, that's just more education than anything else and, and making sure that they're doing that, uh, you know, and, and again, it's just the fact of, you know, open records requests, we're sitting there having to go, you know, when there are open records requests made, and staff members and, you know, council members as well and everything, if you're storing that on your personal email, you're required to maintain that for seven years. And, you know, so it puts, it puts a lot of work on yourself, uh, as well as the city staff to try to facilitate that to make sure we comply with the open records. So, so that's kind of the two goals that I'm looking at with this. Absolutely, if you guys have questions as we go through this process and everything, feel free to reach out to myself or the rest of my IT staff so we can go ahead and accommodate you guys, and more than happy to sit down one-on-one with you guys. This is just gonna be kind of a, a quick dog and pony show, just to kinda give you a good idea of what's going on and everything for it. So, uh, I did give you guys handouts, in the, uh, beginning page of the handout and everything, it kinda talks about the, uh, device itself, uh, what the security PIN is assigned for it, for you guys, so, I know, it's a real complicated one, so. And then also what the accounts that we have created for the OnBase Agenda To Go program itself, and we'll go through that process of, of logging in, so you get a little bit comfortable with it. So, I'm gonna kinda breeze through some of the other stuff, but again, uh, our email address for the, uh, city's IT staff is there. Um, my phone number is there as well too, on that first page, so please feel free to, uh, contact us and let us know if you have any questions. As far as the Agenda To Go application itself, I'm just gonna briefly kinda highlight some of the stuff within the, uh, what I've gotten from the vendor, uh, itself, but it would probably be really helpful if you guys would like to go ahead and actually go onto the devices themselves. So, if you go ahead and click on the, they're all powered up, 'cause I had them all powered up earlier for you guys, so if you click on the home button, which is the little button in the center, for those of you who aren't iPad users, you should come up with a PIN. You'll put in that PIN that, uh, I put on that sheet of paper for you guys, everybody's, is the same for consistency's sake, 'cause I can't remember a lot of the numbers. Thumbs up, looks good. Nodding heads, that's good.
Sorry Drew, where'd you say the PIN number was?
It's on that first sheet of paper there, so.
Very secret.
Ah, yes, thank you, thank you.
Don't say it out loud.
Nobody could guess.
Not at all.
One, two, three, four, five, got it.
Yep, there you go, thank you. No, was that yours? I did four, three. Anyway.
My luggage.
That's my luggage, yeah. Everybody there?
Yep.
Okay, uh, so down on the, uh, iPads themselves, you're gonna see a icon that should, uh, look like a little globe, a little white globe, that's the OnBase one. Uh, I don't have a picture of it here, but it is that one right there in the middle of the screen. He's got it, he's got it, she's got it. Looking for more nodding heads. I told me it was easy, so, he said it was very intuitive, so if he's wrong, if you, if it's wrong, then you gotta blame Mike for this, so.
Testing?
Yep. It is.
No, it really doesn't.
Everybody there?
Yes.
Alright, so, the login for it should already be set up for everybody, so, I, they're real complicated. Whichever district you're in, and the number, so district one, two, three, four, and so on, except for, uh, Mr. Mayor, yours is mayor.
So, Drew, where is, could you tell me where you are, where to click at?
So, in the.
Get in?
Okay.
Oh, that's not here to go.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, I see, I see, so I had gone a little bit further down.
And then the, uh.
Okay, okay, so that one.
That's your, uh, your login there.
Okay, okay, so, password, so where do I type it?
Username.
Your username is Mayor, so that should be a search for you.
Okay.
And then the password.
Okay, okay, so where is, uh, five, three, five, okay.
And it is case sensitive.
Look at this, we're all experts.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
That's a stretch. That's sweet.
The backspace to get rid of them.
This one here?
There you go.
Oh no, I stepped.
There you go.
Oh.
Mayor, right.
Okay.
Down, down the line, that's where you do it.
Okay, five, three, five, six, do I think?
Everybody's playing around with it?
Do I get bonus points for sending my picture?
Go back.
Absolutely, you're all set now, so you're gonna teach the rest of this, I have to go now, thank you.
Just try it again. Just delete them first.
Okay.
That's cool.
That's a discussion that we can.
I think here's the problem.
Oh, I see, I see. Or it still says something about.
Oh.
He, he has him financed too.
Are we all there yet?
It doesn't seem to be.
Go back, get you, give yourself a capital M.
See, these guys are already in there and creating new meetings and everything.
We got a late start here.
Okay, so, need to put.
Yep, you're good there, so then we'll go down here and hit the shift.
Or you just.
This is just a search in archive, you can go from whatever date to whatever date in archive.
Oh, it's a different code, so.
Uh, it should be that one right there. That one there. No problem.
Okay, so I didn't, I was doing the other thing, okay.
And you see how that's not.
Yeah, yeah, so it is, uh, uppercase and numbers and all kinds of fun stuff, 'cause the IT guys like to mess you up with complicated passwords, so, apologize. I think, I think we're all good now, I think we're all at least, uh, in some way, shape, or form at the, uh, logged in at the Agenda To Go thing. One thing I wanted to show you guys, and this is gonna be personal preference for you, you're going to have the option to download, uh, these meetings and also be able to have them, uh, have all the supporting documentation with it as well too. Uh, the benefit of that is the fact of, you're sitting there someplace, at home, wherever, you don't have Wi-Fi to connect to the device and everything, you'll have the information cached where you can go ahead and access this at your leisure. So, but, there's a but, you have to decide if you wanna have it pull everything down all at once, or if you wanna do it individually. My personal preference, but I didn't wanna set it for all you guys, is the fact, uh, is going ahead and having it all download when you first grab the meeting's information, so. We're gonna do that first before we jump into anything else, 'cause I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, and go to that area. So, on the device itself, uh, on the application itself, you're going to see, up here, there's a little wheel, a little setting, uh, settings wheel in the bottom right corner of the application itself on the main screen. So, if you go ahead and, and you select that, it'll allow you to go ahead and make some changes.
Live settings.
Okay, I see. So, there is going to be a selection for download all documents.
Oh.
Right there, and it's toggled off right now, so if you click on that and say, "Download all documents", now, when you go ahead and you grab a meeting which we'll go to and do, it's going to prompt you to say, "Do you wanna download all the attachments, all the supporting documentation at the same time that you're gra, grabbing just the agenda itself?" So, again, that's entirely up to you, it's a personal preference and everything, it's just to be aware of the fact that if, if you go someplace where there's no, uh, Wi-Fi for you to connect to and everything, and you sit there and go, "Oh, I wanna look at this, uh, you know, supporting document, and you haven't already downloaded it", you're going to be clicking a lot and being frustrated, so, just trying to alleviate that, so. Uh, like, uh, I talked about is the fact of, it does have a offline mode capability and everything, so if you're not in a Wi-Fi hotspot, uh, you're not tethered to your cell device or something along those lines and everything, it will show you the fact that you're in offline mode, so all of us are connected right now to the city's Wi-Fi, so you're not gonna see that right now, but in the top right of the device, it'll say offline, so you're aware of what's going on with that, so. Uh, and when you're in offline mode, it just limits some of the things that you can do. Like I said, the biggest thing is the fact of supporting documentation and everything associated with the, uh, agenda, so. Any questions with that? Pretty straightforward, nodding heads, moving on.
So we should save these settings now or later?
Yeah, you can go ahead, I, sorry, you can go ahead and save those settings, and we can go back, uh, back to the main, uh, screen itself. I'll pull out mine so I can follow along with you guys and everything, so I have a point of reference here.
Is that where it's supposed to be?
You said you wanted to go back to the main screen, so.
Yeah, so go ahead and go back to the main screen on the device.
Oh, okay.
Uh, for the OnBase. And mine doesn't wanna log me in, so we're just gonna cheat out the mics here, so. So, when you come up, you're gonna hit the meeting, uh, meeting search area, and this is gonna allow you to go ahead and, uh, select the dates you wanna search for it. Right now, you're seeing the fact that if it's pretty straightforward, 'cause you're only seeing, uh, the February eighteenth Common Council and the January seventh Common Council, but after we introduce this, we're gonna start, uh, pushing more and more of the agendas out there, so you're gonna see more and more, so it's gonna be a big, long list, so the, so the search feature obviously is fairly straightforward. Uh, you can search within a date range, and if you go ahead and hit the meeting type, you're gonna hope, go ahead and see all the different meetings for all the different, uh, organize, uh, groups as well, so.
So Drew, where are the meeting types? I, I see the Tuesday eighteenth.
Yeah, so, so on the, uh, on the left-hand side, you should, should see a blue box that says Meeting Search. On the right side, you might see one that's a green box that says Downloaded Meetings. So, we're talking about the left side here with the Meeting Search with the blue box, you have a Date From, Date To, Meeting Type.
There's your Meeting Search.
Okay, okay.
So, if you, like I said, the date range, self-explanatory, click on that, put the date range that you'd like in there. Uh, for Meeting Type, if you select the Meeting Type, it's gonna give you a, uh, a selection, a menu selection, so you can go ahead and select the different meetings you would wanna look for.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's actually good. So, December date.
Yeah.
Okay.
We all there now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, kinda moving on, 'cause I know we're pressed for time here. Uh, once you get in there, you're gonna see the different meetings that you're able, and in the green box to, uh, select. You can either select those, or if you look over to the right-hand side and everything, there's a little box with an arrow pointing down. That's to allow you to go ahead and download onto the device that agenda. So then it's gonna cache it there, so again, if you don't have a wireless access, uh, wireless access or anything of that nature, you'll be able to pull it down, so.
Okay.
Uh, you also have the ability, once you pull down those, to sort it by dates and by meetings name, so obviously, right now, we don't have a whole lot of selections there, so there's not a whole lot to sort. Biggest thing now too is, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, go into a meeting, so, if we wanna go ahead and use today's, go ahead and select that. It should immediately pull it down and show you the agenda for the meeting, it's, uh, today's meeting. Dark blue is just gonna show the fact of just the different categories and everything, so you'll see things like, uh, you know, Call To Order, and what else do we got listed there? Uh, so we got Call To Order, Roll Call, Closed Session, Presentation, some cool guys giving a presentation right now, Public Hearing, et cetera, et cetera, so, if there's, obviously, if there's information contained within that category, it's going to, uh, just display it right there. Uh, one of the things that you can do is if it's something that you're interested in, if you highlight that area, and then down below on the screen, you'll see there's a white, a red, a yellow, and a green button, you can select that and change the color of it, so it highlights the fact that that's something that has your interest and you want to look at that later on.
Like maybe something where you found a correction in the.
I've, I've got those on my paper copy, so I'm good right now.
Well, you can color-code them now.
I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Like, how do you make the notes though, 'cause I'm like.
Creating a monster.
Oh.
Yep.
I just made that happen.
Yep.
It's in the guide.
They're.
I, I'll read up.
So, just because of the fact we're pressed for time and everything, some of the, some of the biggest things that I wanted to highlight about it is the fact of, you can make notes, so the directions are in, and the guide that are provided and everything. You can also, uh, bookmark pages within, uh, the supporting documentation that you've pulled down. Yes, Susan?
Uh, the supporting documentation on the council agenda doesn't come up, and it doesn't come up on, when you're just online regularly. Finance Committee does.
For, for instance, like, the, one of the first things after Public Hearing is Ray Investments Corp. requesting a Class B. If I click on that, or if I, how do I get the documents?
On the right side, so you're, you're working on the blue side.
I am.
Okay, you go ahead and click on Ray Investments, uh, you'll see a little, a little, uh, kinda bookmark up here saying, yep, that's the one you selected. Now, on the right side, which is the green area, you're gonna see Agenda Item Summary sheet for Ray Investment and Supporting Document for Ray Investment.
No, and this is where I think it's, Drew, I think what happened is when they put it in already, there's a difference in who puts in the information, and for council meetings, it's not getting put in so that we can pull it up. Because I can pull it up on my old iPad, I just click on the Agenda Title and it pulls up the supporting document.
It is pretty.
If you went to Finance, you would be able to do that.
I think somewhat easier.
Last year.
Okay, I'm, I don't like to.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. So it may just be something that may not be loaded up on the.
Well, this is maybe about a thousand dollars, alright.
May have nothing to do with this. Is it possible that, um, I did not just fully download?
Yeah, well, Billy would, so.
But didn't he have the downloads?
Large purchases.
Like, they go to Resolve, shows, it shows that I didn't download it, which I assume means that I downloaded it, that I would have everything including.
I see, I see, because that's all over here, so.
You'd be able to keep your notes, yeah. Sure.
No problem.
It's gonna be a one, not an.
Yeah, thank you, I, I knew that.
Taking a look at that real quick, just because of the fact of, uh, Mike has this, and Mike's pulling down all the attachments and putting notes on it and, uh, everything, so it is working as intended. It might have been because of the fact of, uh, we changed that setting, so you might have to go ahead and just, uh, close, close out of the application itself and then re-log back into it, so it sees the fact that that change has taken place and everything, so.
Mike's working.
Yeah, they're all on mine, so, yeah, they wouldn't have been able.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're on the guest right now, but it doesn't need guests, the, the thing about this is too, is the fact of, it's a, uh, it's, it's available to the public, uh, obviously, they can't get into it and everything, but it's, it's on in the public internet as well.
He wants you to log in again.
It's not behind, uh, any.
I can remember how to do this. Hold down the button.
No, should be. And then we'll go ahead and actually, all I do is double-click on that, and then I'm swiping up and saying, "Get rid of that", now I'm relaunching it.
Did it come back for you, Robert?
It did not, I mean, I, I'm back to exactly where I was, and I don't have the documents, so something's a little funky right now.
So what we're gonna do, is, we're gonna get out of this.
I think it may be better than one-on-one.
Confirm that, and now we're gonna go back, and say, "Search", we see that, and we're gonna say, "Pull that all down", and now we're gonna see, and try to see what happens. No, there should be under the ready documents and everything, so.
Okay, so it's powered off.
Okay, so, just a little glitch right now.
We might have to check to see when, uh, when staff published it and everything to make sure that it was properly, uh.
Pushed out there, I'll blame it on them right now, so.
Fair enough.
Uh, so, again, we're taking much longer than we wanted to for it and everything, which is always the case with new technology, so. But, the biggest thing, again, I would encourage you guys to do is to go ahead, uh, and play around with it. Look at the different, uh, aspects of it as far as, uh, sorting everything out and making annotations on stuff. The notes is a really nice feature as well too, uh, within, uh, the. Documentation, you can sit there and. Like I said, highlight stuff. Deleting is probably something that you wanna do too, just because of the fact of all of those meetings and all the supporting documentation with them, after a while, they're gonna start filling up that iPad uh, with the, you know, with that data and everything, so if you're done with an agenda, you don't have an immediate need to go back to it and everything, especially if it's something that's a month old or what have you. There is a section on there on page thirteen about deleting meetings, how to go about doing that, so I do encourage you doing that, yes?
Emily, do we have on the iPads?
Uh, it's, it's a thirty-two gig, so, so it will, it'll fill up, you know, like I said, the intent of it was for it to be utilized for agendas and for your email, uh, you know, not for storing, uh, stuff out there, you know? And the thing I have to do point out as well too is the fact of, the iPads belong to the city, uh, we will try to manage them for you. If you need something added on to them, please let us know, we're more than happy to help you out, but please be aware of the fact of, it does belong to the city, so it does fall under open records and everything, so, anything you do on it and everything, we might be required to provide that, so. Again, keep that in mind. There's, uh, page fourteen talks about adding notes to agenda items, so that's certainly something you wanna do. Uh, you can highlight stuff, you can bookmark it. One thing to take away from the notes aspect of it, if you're gonna make that electronic note, understand that it is only for you on that device, it's not something that gets pushed back up to the cloud. Nobody's gonna find some, you know, note that you made about an item that you want to, you know, uh, address and everything, it's strictly for yourself. Once you delete it, it's gone, it's not pushed up to the cloud, so, it's just for you to get your thoughts in order as far as things you'd like to see or question. Uh, one big thing, and this is actually more for the staff and everything, but if the staff does make any last-minute changes to supporting documentation and everything, we're gonna have to make sure that they make you guys aware of that, because you'll have to pull that new information down. It's not gonna automatically push it to your devices and everything, so, and there is a process for that as far as reviewing document revisions on page seventeen in the handout as well too, so I, I just kind of encourage you, uh, in summary, again, we're pressed for time and you have better things to do, but I do encourage you guys to play around with it and everything. Uh, if you have questions or if something's not working right and everything, to please reach out to us and everything, I'm more than happy to sit down with you when there's more time available, so we can go through that. Uh, the last thing in closing, everybody's gonna ask about, well, how do I set up my email on this? The back, the last couple of pages on this, uh, goes through the process of setting up your email, uh, on it. The only thing I can't provide to you is your password, so if you do not know what your password is for your email, please reach out to us as well again, we'll be more than happy to reset your password and then go ahead and set you up with it. If you run into problems, just bring it over to us, more than, again, we'll sit down with you, go through it all, make sure it works, uh, as you're expecting it to, so. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Drew, really appreciate it, so. Oh, sorry.
Please don't come with little.
Oh, excellent, yep, thank you, thank you, I, that slipped my mind and everything with something. Uh, just because of the fact of, everybody has their own preferences as far as cases they like, keyboards they might like, or what have you, look out, look out for what you'd like to purchase, let us know, we'll go ahead and order it for you, and then, uh, we'll put it, uh, out there for you. I, I have one for Mike that, uh, Mike is using and everything, I hope he's happy with it, 'cause I already bought it. But, uh, he has one, if you wanna take a look at his, I have it set up with a Bluetooth keyboard, so for those of you who don't like just using a touch and the, you know, kind of electronic type of stuff and everything, you can sit there and have the little keyboard so it feels more comfortable for you and stuff, more than happy to set that up for you as well too. I had already set aside monies for. We'll start seeing more, uh, of the agenda, uh, agendas for the different, uh, meetings and everything, start going out there. Uh, if you don't see it happening and, uh, and there's a concern about that, let me know. I'll be more than happy to harass them as well.
Annie.
Thanks. If we log on to the Middleton Guest.
Yes.
Is it going to bump us out if we don't do anything for a while?
No. Uh, two things. One, we're having, with the transition, uh, over to new management, uh, we'll put it like that, uh, we're trying to, uh, reevaluate all the setup as far as the different things throughout IT and everything. So, we appreciate everybody's patience as we do make that transition. Uh, but we're gonna be evaluating all those things as well, too. But there shouldn't be anything, uh, as far as the leasing where inactivity and you're getting booted out after a, a limited amount of time. It does, it still will eventually push you out and everything just because we don't want our network saturated with connections that aren't doing anything, but, uh, we're taking a hard look at all that stuff right now, so. Thank you. Anybody else?
Any other questions for Drew?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Drew.
Appreciate your time, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Back over.
Okay.
Very few instructions.
Well, the next item on the agenda is the comments from the citizens present. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. Identify yourself and you have three minutes. There's no one here. You want to say something, Mike?
I do, please. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to display to you our hardware for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the City of Middleton. And of course, as you all know, kudos to Bill and Melissa for doing the work that got us this award. We're in the top two percent of all cities in the state on financial excellence and they deserve a round of applause for the. I think it'd be nice if we could have Bill and Melissa step up and have you all behind them and I'll take a picture and it'll be in our annual report for next year.
Oh, fine. Just do it.
You can do that with your iPad, you know.
I'm saying we can still.
And me. Yeah.
You're gonna have to tend like you like your colleagues. All right? A little bit closer, a little tighter. There we go. Good, good, good. Oh, you're fine, Katie. Don't get in front of Mark, though. You're tall. Everybody look this way. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your support for Finance and for all the other staff. This is not just an award for Finance, but really a recognition for the city as a whole and, uh, management that we have for the city.
And just a, a little bit more explanation, uh, as Bill explained it to me, too. This is based on the comprehensive annual financial report that you get, which we put together and, uh, submitted and we finally got it. So, congratulations, guys.
Great. Good job.
Anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, we're gonna close that part of the meeting and, uh, the next item is, uh, the public hearing and that's, uh, seven thirty-two. So, it is beyond that. So, so, public hearings for Ray Investment Corporation doing business as Loops Tukira is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B intoxicating liquor license. They're located at six seven one nine Frank Lloyd Wright Avenue. Anybody who wants to speak either in favor or against it? There are no speakers, we're gonna close that part of the meeting and move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any question or comments? These are with all those seventeen or twenty-one items. Okay, all those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Now, we are on to the agreements.
Motion to defer, I believe, as recommended by Finance.
Contract with Harmony Construction to serve as construction manager for Lakeview Park Shelter. And the.
Second.
Motion is to defer it as, okay.
Can you tell me why or where to?
The, uh, contract needs significant work.
Basically, it's their contract and we have better contracts that we're going to start as a, as the template and then tweak it from there.
Okay. Because people will ask me, so I just wanna make sure.
Absolutely.
Totally.
Any other questions?
Oh, and Emily also, important to you, it's your district. But the, uh, project work can continue and Harmony can start to do work while we work on the negotiations of the agreement. So, those two things will be done simultaneously.
Thank you.
Matt, you have something to add?
I'd like to hear.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those are favor of the motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to award of bid, Court Professional Services, item number one, acceptance, acceptance of proposal for municipal well and pump for water well, number two, rehabilitation.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous, five-year street improvement plan.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous, five-year street improvement plan.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to award of bid, Court Professional Services, item number one, acceptance, acceptance of proposal for municipal well and pump for water well, number two, rehabilitation.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous, five-year street improvement plan.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two, direction to authorize Finance Department restructuring and to fill proposed new positions.
The motion is to proceed conceptually and, and to defer of, um, funding source to later date.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Just a clarification, not clarification, but addition, and that is that we will go ahead and post the positions as soon as we possibly can and hopefully have a financial solution, uh, by the time we are ready to extend an offer to the two new employees.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Authorizing for building inspection manager, hiring, salary and benefit package.
Uh, move authorization for building inspection manager, uh, as, as, as approved by, uh, Joint Personnel and Finance.
Second.
Okay, any question or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to ordinance, uh, this is the first reading, final action may be taken upon approval of motion to suspend the rules under section one point oh seven, Middleton General Ordinances. An ordinance to create a workforce housing committee in the City of Milton.
Move approval. Uh, I will second it, but I would suggest we suspend the, uh, the rules because this has been going through for a long time now.
Okay.
One thing we're gonna suggest is that this goes in effect when we do the, all the new appointments, you know, for committees in April, or it wouldn't go into effect until April.
I had a, sorry, comments?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a question just about the staggering. Um, it's under three appointment on, of the ordinance. It says, you know, there's basically one older person and seven citizen members. Then it says, um, at the initial appointment only, three of the citizen members shall be appointed for a one-year term and four of the citizen members shall be appointed for a two, for two-year terms for the purpose of staggering appointments. And it seems to me that if these are, I believe, three-year terms, shouldn't there be like two for one, two, 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 two appointed for a one-year term, three for a two-year term and two for a three-year term? Uh, cause I mean, right now, it, it bunches everybody into the first year and the second year and maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like the staggering is just not working out.
Right. Or make it a two-year term.
Is it, this is a three-year term, right?
It is, it is a three-year term. This is, this is discretionary with council.
So, I, I mean, it, I, I, I would recommend, if we're sticking with a three-year term, that we would get to, uh, two for, two, uh, two candidates for one year, three candidates for two years and two candidates for three years.
Okay, makes sense. So, so, who were the second?
That's, sorry, I, I did, I did two for one, three for two, two for three.
And then, Robert, after the first year, when those two individuals roll off, are they then appointed to three-year terms thereafter?
Yes, and that, then the staggering works going forward. Uh, this is page eighty-eight of the packet for those who are.
So thereafter, there will be all for three years, once they finish it. So, who were the second on that one? So, is that, okay with you, Susan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Larry, that's all right?
Of course.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just to make sure I got this straight, then, it's, uh, two would be appointed initially for a one-year term, three for a two-year term and two for a three-year term.
Or, the more I think about it, it might be easier, just two for the first year, two for the second year, three for the third year. That way, you got three automatically. I don't care.
Two, two and three.
Two, two and three, I think, is probably easier for.
Yes.
Huh? Two, two and three is probably just easier for the writing of the, the ordinance.
I would agree. Two, two and three.
Okay, let's just do that.
Okay.
We're trying to be clever.
So, that's okay with you, Susan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, all those in favor of this motion, amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion.
Aye.
Okay, so passes seven one. Okay, so the next one is resolutions.
And that was just the amendment, right? Was that an motion to approve the amendment?
That was just the amendment. Larry, I need to go to the main motion then.
Well, I'm not sure it was clear from the, from the status, but that would be the conventional way to do it. Okay, it's included in the main motion to make that change.
With the suspending of the rules.
Yes.
Okay, so that's it.
So, we come back.
Okay, so.
I would need a motion and a second on the amendment.
I, I only have a motion and a second on the main motion. I didn't hear a motion and a second on an amendment.
He asked Robert if he had made.
Okay, so my, the amendment was my motion, so does anyone wanna second my?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, all right.
Sorry for the confusion.
So, we just voted on that part.
Okay, got it.
Now, we are on to the.
Maybe you better vote again.
Okay, all, all right. All those in favor of the motion for this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so seven one. So, now we're going to the main motion and all those in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So, the motion again passes seven one. Okay, resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight, declaring intent to assess cost improvements for twenty twenty million overlay project. This is Fox Ray, John Quill and Sunrise.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two, resolution twenty twenty dash twelve, approving a development financing agreement issues of a tax incremental revenue bond and to establish a special redemption fund for Milton Center Phase Two.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I had a question about two, I'm sorry, about two dates. I'm not sure, just on page ninety-six of the packet, page four of seven, um, uh, it's, it's the one that starts off at the very top, uh, United States of America, State of Wisconsin, Tax Increment Project Revenue Bond. Fourth paragraph down, it says, um, the bond shall be payable, blah, 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 commencing February first, uh, twenty twenty. And are we backdating that or are we making it official as of today's date, the eighteenth of February?
That's actually a good question.
I don't, we can backdate it probably, I don't know.
I think the intent would be they would be eligible for a payment based on their taxes that were paid in the end of January, but we don't issue the payments until the TIF bond is in place. So, this would be, the payment would actually be coming for you as part of the bills to be approved at the March third meeting. I, I don't know if we need to modify the bond or not. I, I don't think we have in the past.
No, we have not.
Okay, and then maybe tied in with that, or maybe this is a separate date, uh, that one was, um, let's see, the bond shall be payable, payable, blah, 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 commencing on that February first, twenty twenty. Then later on, eh, two, two more paragraphs down in the sixth paragraph, uh, it says this bond is issued pursuant to a resolution adopted on February twenty first, twenty twenty. And today again is the eighteenth, which I assume is when we're adopting this. Can we change that one?
I think so.
Okay, so that one.
Unless you wanna meet Friday night.
I don't.
Well, Robert, that's a great job, so, so that should be changed, so.
Okay, let's change that one and the other one, I don't, it doesn't sound like the other one does not need to be changed, but the one in the sixth paragraph should be changed to today's.
Yeah, this is actually a big one.
Okay. I have no further comments.
Any other questions or comments? So, all those in favor of the motion with this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number three, resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, providing for the sale of approximately three point three nine five, zero, zero, three point three nine five million general obligation promissory notes.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.